1271, May 2nd, 2016. Let us stand for the- ...the minutes. In order to any corrections or additions to the minutes, during the minutes we stand-
...for the-
...as presented. Item number three is presentation. We have two presentations. For Officer Adam Pape.
Please stop. Chief? [coughs] A lot of hardware in my pocket tonight. Well, good evening. Woke you up, didn't I?
Yes.
We're here tonight to, um, recognize two individuals that through a process that are going to be promoted tonight into the rank of leadership for the City of Forest Park and its Police Department. So, without any hesitation here, I'd like to have- Greg, would you come up, please?
Congratulations, sir. Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I instate your name.
Aye, great, instate.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support-
That I will support-
The Constitution-
Constitution-
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
The Charter-
Charter.
Of the municipality-
Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
Honestly-
Honestly.
And impartially-
And impartially.
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
As Police Sergeant.
As Police Sergeant.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let me tell you a little bit about our new sergeant. Greg is a 13-year veteran of the Police Department. He graduated the Police Academy in 2003 and on September 28th of 2003 was hired as a police officer for the City of Forest Park. Greg was assigned to the Road Patrol as a Road Patrol Officer for the next four years and in March of 2007 Greg was selected as the department's next K-9 handler. The team of Greg and his partner Dutch worked together for the next nine years accounting for over 100 apprehensions and in 2015 they received the Hamilton County FOP Officer Team of the Year Award for all the work they did in 2014. As of April 29th, 2016, K-9 Dutch is retired. Must be nice to be retired after nine years, right?
[laughing]
And will stay with Greg and his family at their home. Greg and his family reside in Ross Township. He is here tonight with his wife Leslie and their daughter Emma. And to do the honors of pinning the badge on Greg, we have his wife, Leslie. Whoops, this is Lieutenant. Let's go this one first.
[laughing]
I'm just trying to keep you grounded.
[laughing]
Very nice. [applause] I'll just say a few words. I'll keep it short because I'm sure the next person will probably be lengthy.
[laughing]
Um, I just want to say that this is an honor and I just want to thank the chief, the captain, Ty Smith, City Manager Ray Hodges for selecting me in this next assignment as Patrol Sergeant, especially the captain. I was directed to actually say that, but, um, first order. Um, I'm leaving behind some great experiences as a K-9 handler, but I'm looking forward to some new challenges in this next assignment and serving in the City of Forest Park in this new role. Um, I thank my wife Leslie and my daughter Emma for their continued support of my career. Most of us know that this job can, you know, sometimes take us away from our family functions, holidays, as well as sporting events and things of that nature. So, they've been supportive of that and I thank them for understanding. Uh, last but not least, I'd like to thank the coworkers for their continued support and encouragement and in support of since being selected as the new Police Sergeant. It's been very humbling and I just want to say thanks for everyone coming and showing up and sharing in this moment with us.
Congratulations. [applause]
Okay, our next promotion, Adam Pape.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay, our next promotion, Adam Pape.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name.
Aye, Adam Pape.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
The Charter-
The Charter.
Of the municipality-
Of the municipa- of the municipal- excuse me. Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully-
And I will faithfully-
Honestly-
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
As Police Lieutenant.
As Police Lieutenant.
Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you, sir. [applause]
Okay, let me tell you a little bit about Adam. Right before we do this, I asked him to write a short bio and just give me some history that I may have forgotten or just don't remember. At the top of Adam's list is he's my favorite officer to ever be employed by the City of Forest Park. So, I wanted to get that out of the way because he's- he lives in a dream world right there, but-
It's nice of you to say that.
Adam is seventeen- Adam is a 17-year veteran of the Police Department. After completing the Ohio State Highway Patrol Academy in 1999, he was assigned to the Road Patrol Division before being selected in 2004 as a detective working in our Investigation Section. In 2007, Officer Pape was promoted to the rank of Sergeant where he has served for the last nine years on the Road Patrol. Over the course of his career, Adam has received several commendations and awards, which includes a Valor Award which he received in 2006. After serving nine years as a Patrol Sergeant, Adam will be promoted to the rank of Lieutenant where he will assume the command of our Road Division. Adam lives in Madera with his wife Tammy and his two children, 17-year-old Tony and 12-year-old Faith. And tonight, he has many members, as Greg does, of their family here tonight also. But tonight, we have Tammy, who is going to have the honor of pinning the badge of Lieutenant on Adam.
[inaudible]
Just poking anywhere you want to.
He was hoping he was going to choose someone else. [laughing] Is it supposed to go in that little hole?
Yeah.
Sorry, everyone, I didn't know I was going to do this.
That's normal communication between a wife and a husband. He's only known this for like three weeks, right?
[laughing]
Okay.
I didn't know it was going to stick.
Unlike Greg with he gets the chevrons, Adam also gets Lieutenant bars. And we have a little special thing that we're going to do tonight with Tony and Faith. Where you at? Right here. Why don't you come on up and put these on?
All right. I'm like part of this.
There's yours.
All right. So, I just kind of sticky with it?
Take both of them.
Up and down.
Up and down. Yeah, however you want to put it. Fix it later.
Yeah, of course.
Don't hurt me.
I won't, no. It's like so-
Turn to the side.
Turn to the side.
There you go.
Man, this is like some good fabric. It's hard to push that.
You getting ready here in the bull?
All right. She might have the overreach.
Oh, she already-
Right, there you go. All right. There's the line up for me. Nope, there you go. Slippery little thing. I'm going to hurt myself. They do make these shirts pretty strong.
Yep.
There you go. All right, see? I'm sweating up here.
There you go. All right, all right.
All right, as Sergeant Stid alluded to earlier, he seems to think I'm long-winded. But, I do have some things to say. First of all, to the City Council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your support for 17 years. I do appreciate it. Special thanks to the captain, because again, I was ordered to say that. But, Captain, Chief, Mr. Smith, who are in the interview process, thanks for this opportunity. Um, I'm very excited, my family's very excited, and I think some really good things are ahead of us. Again, thank you very much. Um, I'd like to thank my family, without crying, but I'll get to them. My secondary family, these guys out here, Greg, everybody in here, the guys I work with. Obviously, I wouldn't be here without you. You guys have supported me for 17-plus years and, you know, we support each other and I'll be there for you and I just appreciate everything that we've been through, so, to all of you. Thank you. Now, to my family. First of all, my sister and brother-in-law, uh, you guys inspire me daily. Thank you for your service to this country and thanks for being there for me. Ah, I'm a wimpy lieutenant. To my wife and kids, 17 years has been a long time. It's been rocky. We've had our ups and downs with this profession. I wouldn't be here without you guys. I love you. Thank you. To my extended family, it goes the same way. Thank you very much. Love you all. Thank you.
We have some strong leadership coming up in the ranks of this Police Department and not only these two here tonight, but in this whole process, as Mr. Smith could attest to, there were some strong candidates that are just waiting in the wings here for things to start opening up. And I can assure you that the city will be in good hands with some very good leadership as the years come. I guarantee that. On another note, if I could, just for a minute, with the promotions and we have them moving up in the ranks, we're losing also a 17-year veteran of the Police Department who is going to the City of Montgomery as a police officer in the next couple of weeks. So, I'd like to extend to Steve Hoy, who's back here with his lovely wife. Steve, um, we really appreciate your service. You've been instrumental in a lot of, lot of things that's been going on here. You will be hard to replace in a lot of different areas and we, as a Police Department, I personally and I'm sure I can speak for Council and the mayor and the City Manager, that we wish you all the best in Montgomery and good fortunes ahead to you. So, thank you very much for your service here with us over the 17 years.
Steve, without putting you on the spot, if you'd like to say something, we would be glad to hear it.
Sure. [laughing]
I didn't expect this, so bear with me. But, again, 17 years, very long time, like Adam said. He and I got hired together and pretty much became brothers immediately. So, I want to thank Council, like he did as well, Mr. Hodges, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Smith, for everything that's been given to me over the years. Chief and Captain, my career's taken me all across this country and I couldn't have done the things I've accomplished in my career without you guys. I- I can't- didn't expect to not retire at Forest Park, but an opportunity presented itself for me that I felt I had to take and that's why I'm leaving. Like Adam said, the extended family. I come from a place that I have no blood family, so this family is not extended to me. These are actually my family members. My wife, um, God, when we met, I was undercover and I looked terrible. And, uh, and so, I could only get better-looking, believe it or not, so, but I thank God every day because that's the best thing that ever happened for me. If not for Forest Park, we wouldn't have met on a blind date through a member of the Fire Department and I wouldn't have found my dog over on Ken Road. So, the two best things in my life came from this city. I'm going to miss it. It's bittersweet. I- I get choked up even thinking about leaving because it still hasn't hit me yet, but God bless and thank you guys.
Any comments from Council? Councilwoman Herbie?
First of all, I'm going to say congratulations to all of you, to the Lieutenant Pape and Sergeant Stid, and then also congratulations to you on your new opportunity and thank you for your service. And I looked out before as they were being sworn in and I saw huge grins all around. So, I know that we- that you've got family members out here that are extremely proud of you and extended family back here who are very proud of you, as we are. And so, congratulations for all the service that you have given. We know that you'll be giving many more years of service and we appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman?
I would like to say congratulations to both of you. Service, well done. I look forward to seeing you out on the street doing what you do best, taking care of our community. We appreciate you all from the bottom of my heart. I really mean that, we really do. I think we have a nice city and without all of you guys, I don't think it would be that, but you make it a better city for all of the citizens. And again, congratulations to both of you on your promotions and thanks.
Okay, thank you. I just want to take a moment to say, obviously, congratulations on your promotions and to thank you and your family for all of the hours and service that you've given to the city. And as was just stated, we're no better than you make us and we know that given what you've done for us in the past, you will continue to make us better. You know, it's- it's good to know that, you know, as the chief alluded to, it's a good position to be in when you are considering promotions and you know that you have so many people who could fit the bill. You know, we're not one of those places that have to say, "Ah, you know, we only got one guy that even comes close to being ready." We got lots of them and we're going to continue to have lots of them because the people at the top make sure that that happens down- down the line. And the people who are down there know that eventually their day and their time will come. And the one thing that I've always said and that I will continue to say, we don't have to look outside to get people to promote. You know, we grow them at home and we're able to do that because you guys and your families and the officers make sure that we have quality. We're still the best and we're going to stay the best because of that. So, again, guys, congratulations. And Steve, thank you for your service to us and best wishes to you in the future. Thank you all. Okay, now, it is usually at this time when we lose our audience, so, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. However, if you would like to leave, we'll take a brief pause while you do that. Okay, before we go on to the next item, item number four, uh, I just want to, on a personal note from Council, extend our heartfelt condolences to Captain Arts and his family. God bless you and of course, we will all continue to pray for you and your family. Okay, item number four, communications from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before Council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are to be recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address Council? If so, you can please come up to the podium, sign in, tell us who you are, and then state your concern.
Good evening. My name is Harold Scudder. I reside at 523 Waycross Road. I've been a resident of 523 for going on 16 years with my family. We have been, I think, the last meeting of Council, there was other people speaking with regard to a resident in the community that this doesn't seem to abide by our regulations, which brought me to think about the word civility. From the dictionary, it means courtesy and consideration. And so, part of the problem that we're having, not just in our area of the city, and I think it's probably true elsewhere, this is regarding Section Eights. I have no problem welcoming them to the neighborhood, but I think when we do welcome Section Eights to our neighborhood, we really need to let them know what our policies are, like cutting the grass, like being civil, and guidelines that I know we have listed in our- on the website, but do they actually get them? Do they get a paper copy of these guidelines of, for example, cutting the grass, the children being indoors at a certain time, which I think should be looked into also because the curfew really should be shortened. It's, I think, midnight and I work, most of us work, and that's a pretty long time for children to be out when they really should be indoors. The other thing I'm hoping that we can do is get a little bit better on litter. Litter's a real issue in Forest Park. I don't know how many of you on Council live in Forest Park. Is there- can I see a show of hands perhaps of those of you who live in Forest Park?
Forest Park can be on Council.
You all live in Forest Park? Okay, all right. Well, the policemen don't, that's why I noticed Ross and so forth. But, I've noticed it's a real problem with litter and I think it really needs to be addressed more so by- you have two gentlemen that are semi-retired that work part-time and that's your litter patrol. You need full-time people on this, not part-time. I've called the fellow who generally handles that and he really doesn't even return my calls anymore because I've called him so often perhaps. Another issue I think is vacant homes. There's quite a few on our street that I think something needs to be done. And again, going back to the curfews, I think would help, uh, keeping the kids from loitering through the neighborhood, littering through the neighborhood. And I was wondering why the schools don't take action on this too with like ethics and etiquette. Do they teach this at all in the schools?
That's an issue you'd have to address with the school board.
Really?
You see, the school board and the city are separate governmental entities. We don't cross over. The law does not permit the city to interfere with the governing of the school district. So, you would need to take that issue up with the school, with the Board of Education.
Okay. Well, that's- that's- I think it's become an issue regardless of whether who handles it, the schools or City Council, that, again, going back to the original word, civility, okay, and with a simple kindnesses that people could do for one another. And if there's people who move into our neighborhood, why can't we help them, okay? If they don't understand the rules, if they don't have a lawnmower to cut the grass, I'm referring specifically to Section Eights because they don't know. So, how could we- what can we do to communicate with these people who do move into our neighborhood from another neighborhood? So, I'll leave that to Council to decide. So, thank you very much for your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to address Council? Come forward and state your name. Tell us who you are and where you live.
Hi, my name is Gary Miller and my house is at 543 Waycross. I wanted to follow up on what I talked about last Council meeting, um, but what I'd like to do is address each Council member individually. When you leave this meeting tonight and you go home, what would you say if you saw the side of your house egged 30 feet high? How would you feel? What would you think? Or if you go home tonight and you're getting ready for bed, you're relaxing, and suddenly you're startled by a loud crash, you have no idea what it is. It's hard to believe, but rocks are being thrown at your front window. How would you feel and what would you think? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address Council? Come forward and tell us who you are, where you live.
My name is Herbert A. Lewis. I live at 841 West Kemper Road and I'd like to preface my appearance here with a couple of comments. First of all, I have a rather bad hearing impediment and so, I will have to ask you to speak up if you have something to say to me. There are some voices that I can analyze better than others. It's very difficult for me, but I try to get by with it. The other thing is, I'm not here to try to berate anybody. I don't want to argue with anybody. What I'm actually looking for is hopefully a compromise. And I'll give you an example of what I've put up with. A couple of years ago, I parked a self-propelled lawnmower about, oh, five feet toward the street off of my sidewalk. I put it in the grass. That was on a Sunday and Monday the lawnmower disappeared. Or by Monday, the lawnmower was gone. Sometime Monday, when I came home Monday night, the lawnmower was gone. About a year later, I contacted the city to find out what I needed to do to get a permit for putting up a charitable sign about the bridal show in the front yard. They told me I didn't need a permit, so I contacted the company that puts them up and told them to go ahead and put it up and I showed them where it would be most prominent. Well, as it turns out, most prominent is on the street side of the sidewalk. He put it up there on a Saturday and Monday, it disappeared. So, I came up here and subsequently I found out that the City of Forest Park owns a right-of-way to the-
The other thing is, I'm not here to try to berate anybody. I don't want to argue with anybody. What I'm actually looking for is hopefully a compromise. And I'll give you an example of what I've put up with. A couple of years ago, I parked a self-propelled lawnmower about oh, five feet toward the street off of my sidewalk. I put it in the grass. That was on a Sunday and Monday the lawnmower disappeared. Or by Monday, the lawnmower was gone. Sometime Monday, when I came home Monday night, the lawnmower was gone. About a year later, I contacted the city to find out what I needed to do to get a permit for putting up a charitable sign about the bridal show in the front yard. They told me I didn't need a permit, so I contacted the company that puts them up and told them to go ahead and put it up and I showed them where it would be most prominent. Well, as it turns out, most prominent is on the street side of the sidewalk. He put it up there on a Saturday and Monday it disappeared. So I came up here and subsequently I found out that the city of Forest Park owns a right-of-way to the house side of my sidewalk. We're not permitted to put anything out there, even temporary signs. Now, the compromise I'm looking for is this. We have to cut the grass on that property. We have to, and that was another thing. Several weeks ago, when we had a windstorm, some branches fell off of the trees that are on the right-of-way side of the sidewalk. And since they were laying out there, one of them was on my driveway and I moved it over into the grass. But I don't remember how many days later that was that the truck came by to pick up the branches and stuff. And I heard it and I looked out the window and I saw what they were doing. So I figured they were, and the next thing I know, the truck was gone and all the branches were still there. And I find out that that was because I didn't turn the branches so that they were pointed to the street and the ones that were behind the tree, I didn't put out in front and turn them that way. So what we have to do is we have to handle the trash that gets on that property because the city doesn't pick it up. We have to carry the branches out, move the branches in such a way that they point to the street or they won't pick them up. And I don't mind, and I understand what kind of a problem that would be if you had to go around and do all this. But I think with some limitations, and I'm not asking for a wholesale use of the property. Currently, the one thing that I would be asking for is to write to put out near the street a sign for the bridal show that they will be putting up about the middle of May. And they take it down one week later. I would appreciate it if I'd known ahead of time that the city picked up my lawnmower. And I don't know where that went because I never did get it back because I thought somebody just stole it. And it wasn't until a year later when I had the problem with the sign and I came up here and then all this stuff started to unfold. So do you think it's possible that we can work out a little bit of a compromise on the use of that property? So that, I don't want to build anything on it, I don't want to erect anything on it. I just, in this particular case, I would like to let the bridal show people, it's for cancer, put the sign out there further out past the trees so it can be seen. And anything else that I or someone else might like to do in the future, I'm willing to come up here and ask. And if you think it's out of bounds, I wouldn't do it. And I'm not going to come up here and argue with you. You know, I say, here's what I'd like to do, can I do it? And if you say yes, fine. If you say no, well, I understand there's got to be limits. So if you will, give that some consideration and let me know what you think of it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public who wants to address the council? Seeing no one, first of all, Mr. Hodges, would you, would you make, would you respond to the sign issue?
Okay. Regarding the sign issue, there's probably not a lot of flexibility or room for compromise because that is a decision that we're somewhat restricted by law. We don't get to choose what signs can go in the right-of-way and what signs cannot. One compromise, if you will, is given the event, you may contact our front desk and maybe they could help put the message out on the reader board out front of this building. But as far as trying to decide what can go in the right-of-way and what cannot, the courts basically have said that we cannot distinguish by the message. And that just basically means we can't pick and choose what goes in the right-of-way. So we follow a very stringent guideline that anything in the right-of-way is removed. But we don't get to compromise and say, we like this message or we don't like that message, or this is a nice message or this is not a nice message. We don't even get to read the message. So again, there's probably no compromise there, but the compromise could be, we don't disagree, we put the message out and I say, well, contact our front desk and maybe they can put it right up on our electronic reader board right off front. Many more people will see it on our reader board than anyplace else anyway. And I don't think that'd be a problem.
Can I clarify this? Are you saying that if I want to put that kind of a sign up, I should contact your desk up here?
No, I'm saying it won't do any good to contact our desk because again, we can't make a distinguishing ruling that one sign can go up and one can't. So it won't serve any purpose there. But I was saying, contact our front desk and perhaps they can put your message on our reader board, which is out front here. We can put the same message out there. Right. And I think that would, that would be the compromise we would offer.
Okay. Okay, I would ask the chief and/or the captain if either one of them would like to address any of the other issues that were brought up regarding situations on Waycross. Chief?
Hi, see you again. Several years ago, I worked with Mr. Miller, Mr. Whitney on some issues down in their side of town in the B-section. And we were able to come to some type of successful conclusion with that and was able to process that. Over the years, in the thirty-seven years I've been here, I've been involved in many, many, many things and complaints and crimes and such. One of the most difficult things that I deal with, or we deal with as police officers here, is the neighbor issues back and forth. It's very difficult sometime to deal with those because you have to balance where the laws were and where the rights are and those kind of things. I certainly understand what was said here tonight. And we have had a couple of meetings already with these gentlemen. And we've had a meeting with the city manager just recently to go over a plan of action for this. It's something that we're taking serious. We just have to put that in motion and kind of look at all of the aspects of what's going on down there. And once we do that, I think we're going to be able to work something out. One of the main things, I know we've got complaints. The thing that is most important, I know we talked about this a couple of years ago, is when something is happening right then, if you please call us. Call us or call the communication center immediately. That gives us a better chance to respond to whatever is occurring, the rocks at your house or the eggs. Yes, I do know what it feels like to have my, my house and my car egged in the middle of the night and wake up in the morning and see that because I live in the city of Forest Park. So I do realize what that is. But you have to call and you have to be able to pick up and get involved in these type of situations when you're having these neighbor conflicts. Especially, I know I read a lot about the trespassing of the kids into the yards. Those things, that's a criminal act. But we've got to have witnesses to that and we've got to be able to move forward if we're going to into the juvenile court system because that's where it's going to go eventually if that's what you want to do with it. Now, we're hoping that never comes to that. We're hoping we're able to bring everybody together and resolve this. But I'm going to let the captain speak on this. He's actually running the operations on this with a couple of our other police officers. So he can fill you in what happened today because we actually had a meeting with those police officers this afternoon.
We're fortunate that this year, we formulated a new position within the police department and that's called a community response specialist. And that would be Officer Rebecca Evers. I had a meeting with Officer Evers and Lieutenant Jim Moore just this morning and we discussed the issues that are occurring on Waycross Road. This was in response to your appearance at the last council meeting and a meeting that the chief and I had with city manager Ray Hodges. I met with that response team and they have your contact information and they will probably be contacting you tomorrow because our plan, our plan was, was to meet with you gentlemen on Waycross and find out exactly what the specific issues are and then basically brainstorm with you to find ways to ameliorate that. There is also a plan in place to meet with the residents that live at the, at the home that you're, that you're having concerns with. And also attempt to work with property maintenance to take care of any of the issues that are going on with the house and contact this property owner, which I know has been attempted in the past. But we're going to attempt to now use property maintenance to contact these individual, this individual that owns that residence, which I believe is from out of state, and use section eight to our advantage and use their rules to try to take care of those issues that are going on down there. I know that kind of sounds cliche, that the check's in the mail, but in all seriousness, we did have that meeting this morning and that plan is in the works. I'll answer any questions if you, if you have any.
Yeah, I have one question. The one thing I noticed about this, the house in question, originally when they moved in, it was two cars. There are now six cars.
Okay.
So that tells me that other people are living there, which probably shouldn't be.
Okay. And again, I'm not familiar with...
Well, I've contacted the legal department about the section eight also.
Okay. That would be great.
How many people are living in that house?
That would be great. And that'll be some avenue that we can also take to try to take care of that through section eight. Yes, sir.
If this is a section eight house?
Yes, sir.
Maybe the city's lawyer could tell us whether it's legal to rent to relatives.
Yeah, I wouldn't have that answer.
Yeah, I can't give you that answer. I don't know section eight house laws.
We can, we can certainly, in the course of time, research that along with the folks at section eight.
I am not stating that as a fact.
Absolutely.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure that the owner is actually a relative of the people that are living there.
Okay, and...
Once again, this is not, I'm not stating this as a fact, but I'm stating there's a high probability.
Okay. And I believe in due time, we can probably research that and find out what the, what the truth is and what the law is regarding that.
And for what it's worth, as soon as the eggs were found at my house, I immediately called the police.
Okay.
And as soon as I had rocks thrown at my front window, I immediately called the police.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hodges?
Maybe on the, on the last point, I know as we've discussed, it's certainly important to call the police as soon as possible. The difficulties I believe we've had with the issues that have been brought forward is really a matter of witnesses. Regardless of what the issue is, at some point, we've got to have a witness to a crime. That's basically what you're saying, a crime was committed on your property. But it's the same in Forest Park as probably anyplace else in the United States. Eventually, you've got to have a witness to bring a charge against somebody. So hopefully, you know, something can be worked out. You know, we're living in a world of technology now and maybe there's some difference. But occasionally, I talk to people and we talk about problems and it's no question, there's a problem. The main issue is, how do we get to a witness or somebody to bring charges or somebody to file a complaint against someone else? The arresting part becomes sort of the easier part, but you've got to have a basis upon which to arrest somebody. So that's, that has been the issue on those kind of things. Not that they didn't occur, but there's no witness.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then we would move to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item five, reports of standing committees. First of these standing committees will be the Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
I have no report at this time.
Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the ninth. Do you have any to add?
No.
Next committee report is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I have no Human Resource Committee report, but I would just like to say I did attend the Arbor Day festival festivities and it was really great and a big thanks to staff for putting this on and it was awesome. With that, it concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, the next report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Southall.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mara. I do not have a report for Public Improvement and Facilities.
Any questions for Mr. Southall? Hearing none, Mr. Southall, I have no items on the agenda for you for the ninth. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not at this time, sir.
Next committee, next report is Public Safety, Councilwoman Collins is absent. Is there anyone from that committee who would have a report for her? I have no items on the agenda for her for the work session on the ninth. Next report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, first of all, I want to congratulate the Forest Park Steppers who celebrated their eleventh birthday today and attended that celebration and congratulate them not only on them providing this service for exercise for the seniors in the community, but also for all the community service that they do throughout the year. Good, good asset in our community. One of the other things I wanted to draw your attention to, if, if you access the departmental reports, you will see in the economic development section that there's quite a bit of activity going on in the city in terms of interest in retention and expansion of existing businesses in the city and also attraction of new businesses to the city. And the Economic Development Committee voted to make some recommendations for two incentive plans to council. And I don't know when those might be up for consideration by council, but that's coming down the pike. And then the final thing is, the environmental awareness program will be holding the citywide yard sale this coming Saturday. And so we invite residents and your friends and neighbors outside of the city to come to the various garage sales throughout the city that day.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have two items on the agenda for you. The incentive agreement with Caroline Business Park, the incentive agreement for Kipron Meadows Business Center. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Next report, Community Development Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report for community development. However, I would like to just inform council that we're currently looking to reschedule the meeting with the school board for the twelfth of this month, which is next Thursday. Assuming, you know, we have concurrence from those who typically attend that meeting. So the twelfth is currently the tentative date unless there is some opposition or concern from those who would like to attend.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none, Mr. Burns, I have no item for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Next is Intergovernmental Relations and Communication Committee. That's my committee. I have no report, but I would ask any questions if there are any. Next item on the agenda is item number six, the mayor's report. Just like to report that I too attended the Arbor Day. It was, it was a great event. The weather was fine this year. And I want to thank Duke Energy, the Parks Department, and all those who participated to make this event possible, Beautification Committee. So secondly, I attended the retirement luncheon for Lieutenant Jeff Lush. And again, thank all those people who stepped in to make that happen as well. And also I attended this morning the anniversary, eleventh birthday anniversary for the Forest Park Steppers. And as has been stated, they do an outstanding job of providing activities and making contributions to a number of activities and efforts in the city. That will end my report. I would be, I would gladly try to answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, item number seven.
Mr. Mayor, not a, not a question, but my colleague over here to my left also wanted me to point out that the environmental awareness is also going to be offering a clothing and other item collection. other item collection in connection with the citywide yard sale. They're having a, a truck from St. Vincent de Paul out here in the, the parking lot back here, and they will be taking items that you would normally, well, it is designed originally for people who are conducting yard sales. If they have items left over that they want to get rid of, they can use that truck as a disposal site. And then also, it's been opened up to the community at large if they want to bring clothing or other items that St. Vincent de Paul would also collect, and that's out here from twelve, I think, to four.
Okay. And that's all at the parking lot in front of the senior center?
No, I don't think it's going to be down there. I think it's going to be back here.
Uh, by the fire department.
By the fire department, yeah. Behind the fire station.
Okay.
Twelve to four.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda, item number seven, city manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. First, I'll report that the road improvements for the city are underway, and we're very fortunate to have a, an award of a grant for an additional hundred thousand dollars. That's on the council's agenda to determine whether or not we can add a portion of Sharon Road to make use of that grant. I'd point out that, uh, that's one of those grants where we actually try to combine it with a larger grant to do much more Sharon Road. But since we didn't get the larger grant, we did some work, and we were able to get permission to use it for a portion of Sharon Road, and we can u- use it on the worst portion. And I know that's been a concern of some council members, so kind of point out the fact that we're, we're working hard to respond to your concerns. But in any case, the road improvements are underway. I'd also report that departmental reports have all been completed, including the council packet, and placed on file with the clerk of council for public inspection. And finally, I'll report that I'll be out of the office Tuesday and Wednesday on funeral leave for a relative, but I'll be back in the office Thursday if there's any reason to contact me. But that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for our city manager? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Next item is item number eight, other reports. The first of those being law director, Mr. Wyker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing specific to report tonight, but would answer any questions.
Any questions for the law director? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Next report, and others, clerk of council, Mrs. Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers zero-six dash twenty sixteen through zero-eight dash twenty sixteen, and resolution numbers fourteen dash twenty sixteen through sixteen dash twenty sixteen were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Uh, any questions for clerk of council? Hearing none. Thank you, Huffman. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, new business. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only. Ordinance number zero-nine dash two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only. Ordinance number zero-nine twenty sixteen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules passes six-zero. Uh, next item on the agenda, item A, ordinance number zero-nine dash twenty sixteen. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number zero-nine dash twenty sixteen. Amending annual twenty sixteen appropriation, ordinance zero-eight dash twenty sixteen.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number zero-nine dash two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number zero-nine dash twenty sixteen. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, yes. This is primarily, like the motion that we did a couple of weeks ago, a- and, and as it turns out, there, there is, the major portion of this is, again, to move money from the capital fund and the fire fund to the operating fund, and to have authorization to move up to a half a million, although there's, it probably will be less than that, but if something should go wrong. The money still has not come from the auditor. It probably won't be until May, and if anything goes wrong down there, it may even come later. But all of that money will go back into the capital fund. The other major bulk of this also is in the, uh, uh, street fund, to move that out so that it can be used for the resurfacing of that part of Sharon Road until that grant comes in, and then that money would be returned back to the street fund. And, and most, there's, there's another, I think your, your memo described all of these things, but much of it is just moving it out of the existing cash balances. The rest are fairly smaller funds, smaller amounts, but they're all coming out of the cash balances in the specific funds to, to accommodate things that have cropped up since then. So, I would urge adoption of that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk called a roll on the ordinance, zero-nine twenty sixteen.
Yes. Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Ordinance number zero-nine twenty sixteen passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is, is a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only resolutions numbers seventeen dash two thousand sixteen and eighteen dash two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Been moved in second to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only resolutions number seventeen twenty sixteen and eighteen twenty sixteen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk called a roll on the motion to suspend.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item B, resolution number seventeen dash twenty sixteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty sixteen. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Statewide Ford Lincoln Mercury, Inc., for the purchase of one police vehicle through the state of Ohio bidding process.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
I move for the passage of resolution seventeen dash twenty sixteen.
Correct.
Second. Been moved in second that we adopt resolution seventeen dash twenty sixteen. Is there discussion, Mr. Burns?
They stated in the title, this is a scheduled purchase of a police cruiser that is planned for as part of the master lease agreement, or purchasing agreement that council authorized in March. It's a pretty straightforward process. Staff would purchase the vehicle from Statewide Ford Lincoln Mercury, who is listed with the state bidding process. Since they are already listed, there would be no need for further bidding. With that, I would urge adoption of resolution seventeen dash twenty sixteen.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution seventeen dash twenty sixteen?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen twenty sixteen passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item C, resolution number eighteen dash twenty sixteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number eighteen dash twenty sixteen. Amending resolution number ten dash twenty sixteen, accepting the bid of Atleta, Inc., for the twenty sixteen street program.
Is there a motion, Mr. Southall?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I offer a motion that, uh, resolution number eighteen dash twenty sixteen be received for adoption.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution eighteen dash twenty sixteen. Is there a discussion, Mr. Southall?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. On this resolution, we have a great, uh, great street improvement opportunity that will allow us to do much more than street improvements this year, and with our budget, could otherwise would not be able to withstand it. But basically, staff is proposing that we utilize a grant to resurface Sharon Road just east of S- uh, Sutherland, all the way to Waycross. Now that this significant, this is significant, because we've been trying for several years to combine the OPWC and the M, uh, MRF to resurface Sharon Road from Sutherland to Northland, a project of about six hundred thousand dollars. So, however, despite some of the local residents may think the road like Sharon Road is nowhere near as bad as many streets of the other community, and has never been able to rank high enough to compete for the grant, uh, the two grants aforementioned. However, on one hand, we've made major accomplishments to get into the position where, where part of the grant knowing, uh, will be, uh, be a part of the project. So, with that, Mr. Pres-, uh, Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion that, uh, we urge for, a motion, uh, adoption for this resolution.
Any further discussions? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution eighteen dash twenty sixteen?
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution eighteen dash twenty sixteen passes six-zero. Next item on the G, item D. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Collins?
I move to receive resolution eighteen dash twenty sixteen for adoption.
Item D.
No. I'm sorry. Oh. A motion to direct, yes, a motion to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the city of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request to Eagle Group LLC, DBA Jack's Tavern, eight, ten, eighty-one Smiley Avenue, and Si Patio, Forest Park, Ohio, four-five-two-four-zero.
Second.
Been moved in second that we, uh, pass a motion regarding a request for a liquor license for Jack's Tavern. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Question. Ray, do you know how this differs from what their current license they currently have?
I'm not certain it even differs. Um, it, it...
It's a renewal?
It gives them, you know, liquor sales, but I'm not certain that, that is different than what they have, other than it might extend the, you know, the Sunday sale.
Oh, okay. All right.
But when, when we looked at it, and what we're looking at primarily is the fact that it's a restaurant, the fact that these licenses are not uncommon for those restaurants, and that there is no improprieties associated with the business.
I just was curious, because I, I know they've been serving liquor. That was...
Okay. Mr. Burns?
I am a little confused, because the, the way these, the notes are, the D-five-I, spiritus liquor for on-premise consumption only, beer and wine for on-premise, and off-premise in originally sealed containers.
That means you could buy a bottle of wine there, and with it, quart, take it home. It's unopened.
Yeah.
So, you can take it with your dinner. Carry out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or a six-pack of beer, unopened. That's what this license allows them to do.
Right.
And it's only beer and wine that you can do that with.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Any other business? Hearing none?